The rise, say to pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Member Holloway?
Here.
Member DeLulo, unexcused absence. Maria Theresa Carney?
Here.
Uh, member Dwayne Norman, excused absence. I did, um, Ms. Rubin did remind me that there was an email sent of his absence this evening, so for the record, he does have an excused absence. Member Carmelo Aquindo?
Here.
Member Tabitha Rubin?
Here.
Member Don Grigsby?
Here.
Madam Chairman, we have a quorum, and this evening, Ms. Rubin and Ms. Grigsby will both be voting members of the commission, fully participating throughout the proceedings.
Uh, do we have an approval of the minutes?
So moved?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Any nays? No? Okay, very good. All passed.
All approved?
Yep. All approved.
Motion passes, thank you.
We have some new members on the board. Congratulations and welcome.
Welcome, ladies.
Um, we have to nominate?
I'm sorry, yes, Madam Chairman, um, tonight on the agenda, and again, yes, of course, welcome to all the existing and new commission members, of course, and looking forward to another year with the planning commission. So tonight on the agenda, under item two, we first have agenda item B, under sub-paragraph two, the nomination and election of chairperson. Again, procedurally, what that will call for is that, um, the chair will call for nominations. The nominees will be voted upon in the, in the, in the order in which they are seconded, okay? So if there are more than one nomination, the first nominee to be seconded will be the first one taken up with a vote. Once there has been an election of the chair, then the chair will assume or remain in position, and then call for nominations for the vice chair, and the process will be repeated. So, um, Madam Chair, you can call for nominations for chair for the year.
Do we have some nominations?
I nominate you, Madam Chair, Rose Holloway.
I second the nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, congratulations, and, uh, Madam Chair, you can now call for nominations for vice chair.
Nomination for the vice chair?
I nominate Camilo Aquindo.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Vice chair will be Mr. Aquindo, and Madam Chair, Holloway, very good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our first item would be, um, resolution number 2021 dash zero six three R, parcel K, Anthem Park, conditional use, that's the DRC case, CNU 21 dash zero 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 one.
Good evening, commissioners, and wishing a warm welcome to the new commissioners. My name is Nathan Milch, I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Uh, my name is Nathan Milch, I'm a associate planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, before you, we are going over the conditional use for parcel K within Anthem Park. Uh, it is DRC case number CNU 21 dash zero 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 four, or sorry, one, and resolution number 2021 dash zero six three R. It is 1.21 acres, generally located west of Old Canoe Creek Road and south of Lexington Boulevard, and tonight we are requesting approval of resolution number 2021 dash zero six three R. Next slide, please. Uh, this map is included to just avoid any confusion and give a little background, as there are a few different developments and projects going on within the Anthem Park PUD. Um, so at the last commission meeting, uh, there was a project for a PUD amendment and revision to the final master plan that involved track G and track M, and that case is currently ongoing, and tonight we are focusing on track K, as you can see in the map. Next slide, please. Uh, giving a little bit of a background, the zoning of the track is planned unit development, or PUD, the future land use is medium density residential, and the current Anthem Park PUD ordinance, 2004 dash three two, permits the use of gasoline sales in conjunction with a convenience store on a conditional basis on parcel K. I've also listed the new ordinance, 2021 dash oh four, because if that PUD amendment from the previous case ends up getting approved, that will be the new ordinance number. However, both of those ordinances, the, um, the language governing parcel K did not change, so that stays the same. This project is compatible with the general development pattern in the area. The original Anthem Park PUD final master plan designates parcel K as future commercial development, and staff has determined that there will be no adverse impact to city facilities. Next slide, please. Uh, this project is consistent with the city's strategic plan goals for economic development. Next, please. And DRC staff's recommendation on 21121 was for approval of resolution number 2021 dash zero six three R, and the planning commission requested action tonight is approval of resolution number 2021 dash zero six three R based on the six factual matters of the Land Development Code. Thank you. And if there are any questions, I believe the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would, is the applicant here? Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members. For the record, my name is Xavier Gagoydia, I am the, um, the agent for the applicant. We concur with staff's recommendation for approval, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commission have any questions?
How many gas pumpers are gonna go out there?
We don't know at this time. All we've pre, all we've presented thus far is a conceptual plan, and all we're trying to do is get conditional approval for it. We would still, uh, that would be determined at the later stages of permitting when we submit a final site plan to the city to review.
Okay, thank you. Traffic studies been done?
No, it has not. That, again, that would also be addressed at the next level of, of review.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just for point of clarification, um, not knowing, what is it that this approval level allows you to do that if you didn't have it?
Well, it, it's a conditional, a conditional use, and it has to be approved as, as such prior to moving to the, again, a final site plan approval, which has to go through city, uh, city review, and so, um, I hope that answers your question, maybe?
As I'm learning, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Grigsby, if I could, under the Land Development Code, definition section for conditional use, it's defined as a use that would not be appropriate generally or without restriction throughout the particular zoning district, but which if controlled as to number, area, location, or relation to neighborhood, would promote public health, safety, comfort, good order of appearance, convenience, prosperity, morals, and the general welfare, conditional uses may be enumerated in the zoning text, or the city council may determine its action granting saying that such use is generic to the specific provision set forth in the zoning text. But basically, it wouldn't ordinarily be permitted, but with the application for the community and through the, the guidance and review of the council and the recommendations of the commission, under whatever pre, uh, context you would approve the use, based on conditions that it would be approved. So that's, it's, it's basically laid out as a definition in your Land Development Code that has to go through this process. We're at the advisory stage, this, the commission, as you know, is a advisory commission, and we'll be making a recommendation on this application to the council, we'll then take the final action on it.
I guess that would be, what are the, what do the other people in the community think of it?
Well, they're gonna have an opportunity here, after the applicant and the staff made their presentation, there's public comment time this evening.
Okay.
Commission will receive the public comment, any questions from the commission to the applicant, staff, and so forth, will be exchanged, and then at some point, you'll close the public meeting, confer amongst yourselves, and then take the appropriate action.
So just again, for clarification, it's not zoned currently for what it was initially planned, or what you had hoped to do?
Yeah, it's-
Having a convenience store, but it's the addition of the gas station portion of it, correct?
Correct, this is, this, the issue this evening is with regard to the-
Gas station portion of it only.
Correct, the application is for the approval of gasoline sales.
Just trying to get it down to my level of conversation, of understanding.
It's on your first page of your report under the request.
Well, yeah, so, no, I read that, but that's why I'm just saying that it's, it was, this is their change, is adding the gas station portion of a convenience store.
That's a question for staff.
Yes, so in the original, uh, PUD ordinance, um, it was listed as a conditional use, so essentially, all the different parcels have, have uses that are permitted, um, that is listed on the ordinance, and same within our Land Development Code for different zoning districts, we have, you know, different permitted or conditional uses. So essentially, it's just, the conditional uses have the extra step added where they need to go through planning commission review, and then they need to be formally approved by the, by the council.
Okay.
If that clarifies.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody? Well, you need to-
Madam Chair, before, before we call for public comment, um, it would be advisable for the commission if there's any questions from either staff or the applicant, and then if not, then you can-
Yeah, we've already had that.
Okay, then, then that's fine.
Um, so, members from the public, who would like to speak? Have you filled out a slip yet?
Has everyone filled out a form?
If I may, if anyone wishes to speak, um, please come to the podium, give your name and address, make sure that if you haven't already, that you fill out a form to give to our clerk after your presentation, please. Thank you.
Okay, we-
Hi, my name is Harold Ellens, 1841 Remembrance Avenue, member of the community.
Okay, thank you.
Personally, and I think collectively, we feel that gas station in the community is a bad idea. We've got four gas stations within a mile and a quarter, so there's no need for a fifth at this point, that's our opinion. Additionally, um, we believe that it will only exacerbate the access issues with the traffic flow. Further, it will add safety, we've got a, uh, uh, I'm gonna say daycare, but I know that's not the right name, a school.
Early learning center.
An early learning center. I paste it off, it's 81 feet driveway to driveway. We feel that that's gonna be a safety issue. Gasoline potentially has a large tank underground, right? Which, if you have leakage, gets into our, our water system, not, we're not fans of that. If it explodes, we've got literally a bomb, we're not fans of that. There's a building program that's gonna happen right adjacent to that, not to, to say nothing about there being a main pipeline trunk, pipe trunk line, natural gas.
Comes right through, yeah.
That goes right through there, that's probably, I don't know, two, 200 feet? Maybe, maybe two, 200 meters away?
Yeah, not very far.
But very close, right? Further, we believe that it's going to, um, precipitate in an uptick in crime, that is vagrancy, loitering, litter issues, et cetera. Again, a gas station, we, we know that homes clo, within close proximity of gas stations generally lose their property value, so we don't see this as a good idea inside the community. I do have nearly 250 signatures from the community. I will provide those. That also is for the rejection of this property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have you afforded the applicant a copy of those names? Is there a copy that's been afforded to the applicant?
Uh, I have-
It's now part of the file, sir.
I have the slip-
It's been submitted, it's been submitted as part of the file. No, it's, it's part of the file.
Thank you. I have a slip here for Eileen Perez.
Good evening, thank you for the taking the time to listen to us tonight. In addition with the gentleman shared, I, well, I live in the same community, um, 4750 Capitol Boulevard. In addition to the concerns that he mentioned, I also have concerns about a convenience store, which would be part of the gas station. Uh, as a commercial area, it doesn't specifically stipulate that it would be a convenience center, and that also brings additional concerns for a community. Being residential, we have small children, and that would bring a lot of people coming into our community and making it less safe. Not also with the traffic, it's not only the, um, early childcare, but we also have the school, the elementary school, and that whole street backs up with traffic twice a day to pick up the children and drop them off at school, so that location is not good for our convenience store or a gas station. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia, uh, Dundas, Donas?
Brian doing my question?
Certainly, yes.
You have it packed.
Okay, very good.
After we make a presentation, you'd fill out a form for us, sir.
I did, I-
Oh, I have one, I have one.
Uh, good evening, everyone, I'd just like to thank you for letting me have the chance to speak. My name is Brian Dundas, my wife Claudia, we are the owners of Creative World School, located at 4500 Lexington Boulevard, which is, gentleman said, approximately 91 feet across the street from where parcel K is located, and we have a list of over 120 families also that attend our school, many of them residents of Anthem Park, who are against the, uh, building of a gasoline station for safety reasons, plus reasons of a convenience store for the traffic, the loitering that will go with that across the street from where these children are being cared for every five days a week. We'd also like to, um, refer back to the original planning for, um, the Anthem Park subdivision that was submitted back in 2004, and I'm just gonna read a statement from the, uh, minutes of that meeting, and it says, "In commercial pods, there, there must be a permanent use of lists and conditional uses lists using neighborhood business requirements may be good for a starting point. A list of prohibited uses is also advisable to prevent any confusion. Staff will not support uses not in harmony with a residential community." So I would like, if the staff could go back to that meeting and find out what those conditional use lists actually say, and if, if a gas station would have been permitted back then, because that really is not in harmony with a residential community, where, what, we, we invested $3 million in building our school to enhance the Anthem Park neighborhood and to benefit the residents of St. Cloud, and we feel that it will have a direct impact on our business and the welfare of our children, the children that we care for, with the gas station being across the street, and a list of all of the things that come with gas stations, the fumes, the chemicals, and all of that stuff. And we do have some information to submit to the council for your, for you to review also, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Claudia?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll give these a few, one is for the planning board, and one is for the city of St. Cloud. My name is Claudia Dundas, I reside at 1425 Hidden Oaks Bend.
Thank you.
I'm the other half of the ownership of Creative World School, and just a couple things that I, um, I've been doing a lot of research lately. I care for my babies, all 120-plus children that we have in our care. I'm concerned about the traffic congestion, um, I would like to invite all of you, if you are interested, to come sit in our parking lot, um, between 7:30 and 8:30 on Monday through Friday, or 2:45 through 3:30, Monday through Friday, and watch the traffic that is in front of our school, which is the direct entrance to this gas station, or proposed gas station. The families have expressed concern for alcohol, tobacco sales that would be happening, the potential crime that would be brought to the area, um, the community character, which I think is what Brian was talking about when he was speaking there, um, the health effects, um, including benzene, you know, the ethanol, all of those different gasoline chemicals and things like that. Noise, definitely gonna be a problem, pedestrians, children walk to Neptune Elementary. We don't have a crossing guard at Neptun, um, sorry, Old Canoe Creek right now, but is there gonna be a gas, or a crossing guard at the gas station? The concern there is people don't pay attention when they pull out on the main roads, and I don't want babies that aren't even mine to be hit by a car. Um, there's blighting, I didn't know what that word meant, um, blighting being that a store gets boarded up if it's not successful, are they gonna board this up and it be a, uh, a dark shadow on the neighborhood if it fails and is not successful? We're concerned for the sexual predators and offenders that could be sitting in the parking lot, watching our beautiful babies right through the gate, not happy with that. And as Brian mentioned, we do have, um, 140-plus signatures from our families, as well as the St. Cloud Police Department, their signatures are in here as well. So people that work at the St. Cloud Police Department, we have a family at our school that has two children, she asked me for the petition, and she definitely handed it around in that office as well. I really appreciate your consideration in denying this request. I care for these children so much, and I do not want to have to evacuate them from my facility and take them to Neptune Elementary. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Maria? Maria, what, I can't read the last name.
She's coming up.
It's you, okay. Please state your name and your address.
Maria Augusta.
Augusta.
I apologize for my handwriting.
That's okay, that's okay.
Um, I am the facility manager for Anthem Park. Um, I, my property management company works for the Community Development District that maintains Lexington Avenue. As it is, we're responsible for cleanup, littering, cars that are going in and out, they throw stuff out their windows, um, we also pay the landscaping over there. As it is right now, my, um, crew consists of two men, um, one of them is a retired veteran who's in his 70s, and the other one is a part-time teacher who works in the evenings. We simply do not have the manpower, um, to increase what is expected to go along with the gas station, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Uh, would s- Would staff come up here, please? Uh, because I have a question. What's the distance between, uh, any school and, um, an establishment that sells alcohol, regardless if it's a bar, a restaurant, or a gas station?
Um, and I, I believe I could do some research into that for you.
There is a, there is a distance requirement.
Yes, um, there, there would be a, a distance requirement, uh, I believe that that's state statute, but, but I, I don't know that off the top of my head, I, I'd be happy to do some research and report back to the commission on that.
Right now, the way it stands, how far is the, uh, proposed gas station, or would be the proposed gas station be from that school?
Uh, it looked to be about 90 to 100 feet across the road. Uh, and, and just to, I guess, clarify, so if the gas station was approved, it, that doesn't necessarily mean that they were a part, they are approved to sell alcoholic beverages, that is a separate permit that, that needs to go through our department as well.
Yeah, because, I mean, I, I could be wrong, but from way back when, I thought it was 1,000 feet, it had to be, uh, between establishments like that. You got, you got to come up.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to speak at the microphone when the time is appropriate. No, ma'am.
Sorry about that.
Madam Chair?
That's okay, that's okay.
I'm sorry. Um, I did look up, furthermore, section 562.452A, Florida statute prohibit sales of alcohol business, uh, within 500 feet of private schools and public schools.
500 feet, okay, okay. Thank you.
Is that, is all?
Well, yeah, if you would, uh, check on that, make sure that's correct.
If, if I could, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I, I understand the relevance of the discussion in the general sense, but again, tonight, this is an application for conditional use for gasoline sales in conjunction with a convenience store, so it's, some of these issues that, you know, are naturally going to be brought up as discussion, we're going from a broader issue here this evening to more specifics down the road about what other specific may come into play, but tonight, this is just the conditional use application, so I wanna keep it focused on the big picture.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have questions for the staff?
I'm gonna follow up with Ms. Carney's question earlier, uh, traffic study has not been done, correct? To find out what the impact would be, whether there's gasoline, or whether it's just a convenience store?
Uh, no, a traffic study has not currently been done, that would be something that would be done at the site development process, and the city has a requirement to do a traffic impact analysis, uh, at that stage in the development, uh, but, um, as, as we've been discussing, that, that's not currently the, the step that we're on. Are there any more questions I can help with?
No.
Thank you.
But do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? If not, then, uh, I'm closing, uh, public, uh, comments for right now.
Madam Chair, just, uh, does the commission have any questions, further question for the applicant?
Yeah, do we have any questions for the applicant? Any, any more questions for staff? No?
Usually the applicant's given an opportunity to respond to the, the comments from the community, it may be appropriate just to ask if the applicant wishes to be heard one final time before closing the public meeting.
Would the applicant like to come forward and have any more comments?
Thank you, members. Just, uh, again, wanted to thank you for hearing us out today, and, uh, again, we concur with staff's recommendation for approval, uh, for, for gas sales at this commercial development, and I just wanted to emphasize that it is approved for commercial, and we're just trying to add the, the gasoline component to, to that approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
At, at this point in time, might be good to close the public meeting portion, and then you can have discussion, and if there's no discussion, then someone can make a motion at the proceeding.
Yeah, we've already closed the public.
Okay, I, we won't announce that, then.
Yeah, we already closed that.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to deny the denial of resolution number 2021 dash zero six three R based on the six factual matters within the Land Development Code.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Five to nothing nays.
Okay, so the motion was to recommend the-
Denial.
Denial.
The recommendation to the city councils to deny-
Denial.
The application for conditional use as presented.
Yeah.
Based on the Land Development Code, uh, and the motion passes five to zero.
To five to zero. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we have some new business.
Yes, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm just anticipating Madam Chair's question about the current membership of the commission, as it were, with regard to Commission Member Delillo. I think in previous, recent, previous meetings, we had received feedback back from the commission to inquire through the Madam Clerk, through the Building Department, and onto the City Council about the need for an appointment, a reappointment of that particular seat. And so, anticipating that that's an interest to the commission...
That's right.
Then we will take that suggestion, as again, a reminder through Ms. Light and onto the Building Department, and onto the City Council through the City Manager, for that seat to be addressed.
Yes.
And certainly, take any feedback that you have at this time, but we understand that that is a concern to the members of the commission, based on, I think, our last meeting, and maybe the one before that even.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yes, I will bring that to our director's attention, so we can get that position filled.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Because if anybody else gets sick, then we're running short.
Understood, understood. It's always, it's always most effective when we have a full commission.
Yeah, and it's not fair to the public. I mean, they're putting in their applications, and they want to have their meetings...
Of course.
...in a timely manner, so. Thank you.
Of course.
And it's a privilege to serve on this committee, so if you get in there, serve.
That's right.
Indeed.
Do we have anything else? If not, then I'm closing the meeting as of 6:30.
Call for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody wants to stay?
No.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for my newspaper and my sanitizer.
Next meeting?
It will be April 20th.